Hello and welcome to this debate among candidates for Utah State Board of Education in District 14. District 14 encompasses parts of Beaver, Sevier, Iron, Emery, Utah, Millard, Juab, Carbon, Sand Pete, and Grand Counties. Our candidates today are Republican Emily Green and Libertarian Richard Jensen. My name is Jay Evenson. I'm an opinion writer for the Deseret News and I will be your moderator here today. At first, I would like to recognize and thank our sponsors for this debate today. And they are the Hinckley Institute of Politics, KSL, and the Deseret News, the United Way of Salt Lake, the Utah PTA, the Sutherland Institute, and the Utah Association of Charter Schools. Our goal as always is to provide a platform to help voters make informed decisions in the upcoming general election. And I will remind everyone that Election Day is November 8th. The ballots in many counties will begin to go out into the mail on October 18th. Now, the rules of this debate are simple. Each candidate will be given time for a 90-second opening statement. And for the first 30 minutes or so, I will pose questions to the candidates and each will have 90 seconds to answer. Should a rebuttal be necessary, I will grant another 30 seconds for that. Now, at the end of the 30 minutes, we would like to begin receiving questions from you, the viewing audience. And I'd like to ask you to begin posting these in the chat function of YouTube so that we're ready to go at that time. And if I don't get enough of your questions, I have some extra ones of my own. So prior to this debate, I met with both candidates and we went over these rules and we used a random process to determine the order in which the candidates will begin. And we will begin with Richard Jensen. And you may receive, sir, with an opening statement.
Thank you, Jay. You actually started breaking up on my feet a little bit. I hope I'm coming through clearly to you. My name is Richard Jax Jensen. I'm a resident of Enoch, Utah. I actually serve on my city council here. I am a registered libertarian and service as Secretary of County Libertarian Party. I'm co-chair for a local citizens group called Advocates for Prosperous Community. We're about roughly 30 to 40 citizens gather weekly to talk about the things going on in our community and concerns we have and make, help people be informed. I started the Iron County Schools Parents Page, Parents Group on Facebook a couple of years ago because I wanted to make sure that everyone knew what was going on in our schools and have a way to gather information and communicate. And so I've attended every single school board meeting for approximately two years where I take detailed notes and I post them to the Facebook page. I'm up to well over 700 parents who follow that and communicate and talk about what's going on in the schools in Iron County. So I'm well aware of what's going on in our local school district and generally across the nation and things. I'm a father of nine. I currently have seven kids in our school district on all ranges of grades and one who has not started. I'm a disabled veteran, served in military intelligence for a short time and then got broken up. I'm not currently employed. I'm a considered I'm on VA disability and so they pay the bills. And so my, my time serving, doing what I do with the school board to help people be involved and on the school district is just my way of helping earn the check that I do receive.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. And now Emily Green.
Yes, thank you so much and thank you for having us today. My name is Emily Green. I live in Cedar City, Utah. I'm a mother of five, a wife, entrepreneur, commercial designer, business owner, strong advocate for academic integrity within Utah public school systems. So I've spent nearly a decade as a volunteer within Iron County School District. I've helped out. I began helping out in classrooms, organizing the events that happened there. From that, I definitely received a desire and a passion to help further. So I, I joined the PTA. I have served as PTA president. We did some amazing fundraising during that time. Were we able to secure funds to help, you know, fortify the schools that my children went to? So I studied at SUU and I majored in family and consumer science and my minor was early childhood development. And those two things have definitely always been a passion of mine and something that, that I have paid close attention to. Through the ways that I've been involved with the schools, I've been invited to attend and participate through some organizations with the United Nations Commission on the Status of Women and also the United Nations Civil Society and along with the World Congress of Families. It was through those invitations that my eyes, I guess, were opened in a way to see the complexities of what we are dealing with in our world now and to be able to look at many things because of literally the, the understanding and the study that was required to be able to go to those platforms. So I'm here for the kids and I'm here with lots of passion to do what's best for them.
Thank you very much. I'd like to begin with the questions. I will begin with Emily first. And this is a simple kind of an overall question. Tell me your assessment of public education in Utah right now. Are we succeeding? What things are we doing right? Where do we need improvement? How would you help bring about those improvements as a board member?
Okay, that's a wonderful question to start with. I think that public education is extremely important. And I think the complexities that we've seen and the unique situations that we've gone through as a nation in the last couple of years has really opened up our eyes. I think for a long time we've had it as parents and just as citizens, we've we've gone along smoothly and even become a bit apathetic towards how we are involved in those organizations. From that, I think that we have, we've started to see maybe that that we're off track just a little bit in areas. And I, and I say that based off of statistics that are coming in, the data that's coming through. I am concerned with, with that data, with our reading abilities, the, you know, where we're coming in at the test scores is really where it comes down to. So my goal is, is to question and I think to realign the purpose and ask, why do we send our children to school? And I think there, the disconnect that we have seen manifested is that parents thought that we were sending our kids to school for the academic zeal and rigor and, and those disciplines that they're learning. And we want to make sure that those, that this platform, that this public education setting maintains the integrity of that ideal. And so it's through that lens of academic rigor, academic excellence, that I will view every single thing that we discuss within the public school setting.
Thank you. Richard.
Yeah, I'll echo what she said that we are academic rigor, I feel, is unfortunately lacking. I think we've got great teachers who try to do their best. I'm worried that the standards that we give them are so vague and so that we don't set teachers up to succeed by interfering too much and not trusting them to teach the subjects that they're the professionals in. But also giving them standards that are so vague that it's hard for, it's hard for us to test a standards-based test when there's no standards-based education. Right? And we, what one history class teaches in one place is so, could be so vastly different what they teach in a different school. But how do you give one standardized test when there's no standard education? The standards are, I think, need to be redone. As I said in all of our school board meetings and school after school after school is just finished in our district, coming through and giving their school improvement plans. And quite more often than not, they would report that the children's proficiency, whether that be high school or elementary school, that over 50% were not proficient in a specific subject according to the testing. That over half of them are not proficient. And if I'm going to send my kids to school, am I really just flipping a coin? Whether or not they're going to come home being able to do math or read. I don't think it's, I think the teachers do great and do the best they can. I think that the system from the state and the federal system down are failing the teachers.
Thank you. The next question, as you know, the State Board of Education is now a partisan body and I mentioned your party affiliations as we opened this debate. Tell me in what ways your party affiliation will affect how you make decisions as a board member? And Richard will begin with you.
Yeah, well, I'm a member of the Libertarian Party. Just recently, when it was time to file, I switched over to be a Libertarian. I'd been a lifelong Republican before then. My party affiliation, no matter what party I've been in, my goal has been to maximize individual liberty and freedom. And so I want education and parents to be the most involved in their children's lives and to maximize decision-making process down as close to the individual as possible. So that happens to fit with the Libertarian Party just fine to try to minimize the federal involvement with the state board and try to minimize the state board's involvement with the local boards and try to minimize the local board's involvement in personal family decisions as much as possible. Try to get all decision-making down to the level of the individual as close as possible.
Thank you. Emily.
Yes, so I think with the Republican ideals, there's, you know, the, the top three that I would say number one is the ideal of strong families, limited government, opportunity for all. And you can keep on, you know, and you can add to that. You've got quality leadership that you have honest compassion, which means that you're able to look at all of the different areas that need to have compassion brought into the subjects because we're dealing with individual people's lives. I think that's super important. And I believe also in kind of a rugged individualism, but I think that carrying that ideal, that you can also collaborate with everybody that's involved. I also believe that bringing people together from, you need all views. But with all views, I will also align to the things that I believe and that I hold true. And, and those are some of the things that I do. Personal responsibility is another one. And I, I would like to think that also the, the school setting supports those ideals. I love Utah's code on civic societies and character education. I would encourage every Utahan to read through that. And I think that's a, a great guider that unites all of us in what that ideal should look like for our kids in the school setting.
Thank you. Now I'd like to get into some more specific issues here. And we'll begin this question with Emily. Recently, the state school board voted to withdraw its support for the biennial students survey on health and risk prevention known as the SHARP survey. This is after 20 years of support. Some concerns were raised by some board members about some of the questions on the survey while support for continuing to collect data used to its students. The board is now in the process of asking for public input. What are your feelings about this? Do you agree with the decision to withdraw support for the SHARP survey? Begin with Emily.
You know, surveys are important, but I do support that approach that they did. And the reason that I support that is I think that we need to start questioning what it is that we're asking for and what it is, what's appropriate to be collected from students. I have been following surveys and I do read them. I have five children that are in the school system. And I think that we also as adults need to be questioning what it is that we're presenting children with in those questions as well. So some of the things that I was following, I mean, if the child is presented over and over and over again about drugs and alcohol use, how is that beneficial for them? So I think, you know, you can survey students all day long, but I think that there needs to be quality checks, integrity checks, and also privacy checks in what is included in those surveys. And I, I think that the pushback that we're seeing on, on this reality specifically around survey and data collection is that we are responsible with what we are compiling and presenting in front of children, that we also acknowledge privacy issues between parents and families' belief systems. And I, I think that the pushback also highlights where there's kind of it's just something that seems to be, to feel like it's getting out of control. So if we can just take a step back and, and ask ourselves as adults and that we be responsible with those approaches that we're taking.
Thank you. Richard.
Yeah, just about all those types of decisions, I think, should be reviewed occasionally and the fact that the board decided to take a setback and review, it seems like a good decision to me. So I understand most of the decision was made. They wanted changes in the way the questions were presented to kids. So for instance, if a child answered the question, you know, have you taken any drugs? And the answer, no. They're then not given also the question, well, do you smoke marijuana? Have you tried ecstasy? Have you tried all these additional ones? Because they've already answered the question. So like Emily was saying, it reduces the exposure kids even have to the idea of them and doesn't present them with things that they hadn't known were previously possible or existed. Our local district actually has chosen to participate in the SHARP survey anyway on an opt-in basis rather than just handing it out to every kid and they are asked to take it and the parent has to tell them, no, I don't want them to. They have to actually fill out a form, say, yes, I'm okay with my student taking this and only those people who opt in take it. The information they gather from the survey in some cases might be quite valuable. In some cases, I think it maybe crosses the line. So I'm absolutely okay with the state school board taking a step back and say, we want to actually review the content and make sure that it meets the standards that we've already put in place as a state and meets the community standards that Utahns expect.
Thank you. Recently, the state board passed a rule requiring school districts and charter schools to make the selection of books and videos and the process of reviewing complaints about them transparent and publicly available to parents. Also, all curriculum committees for schools must now include at least one parent who has a child at the school and who is reflective of the school's community. Do you support this rule and does it, in your opinion, satisfy the need for greater parental involvement? Begin with Richard on that.
Well, I think it absolutely increases parental involvement. And I'm absolutely in favor of the principle involved here to let parents know what's in their schools, what kind of media and books their, their children are consuming and being presented with. I don't, I see where it could lead to a problem where there's so much delay and so much burden on teachers to provide all this information that it almost makes it impossible them to function. I don't, I absolutely don't think that's the intent of this rule or the parents involved who just want to know what it is that their kids are seeing when they leave their house and are entrusted to the education system. I, I believe there's good intent there and I believe it'll actually work that way. So I'm in favor of the rule. I hope that there aren't any people out there who are going to use it to complain that it's such a burden, we can't possibly be transparent to to parents. And I, I think that that's the claim I'm kind of been hearing is that this is such a burden, we can't possibly comply with being more transparent because it just makes things too hard. And I think there's absolutely needs to find a way to have the parents know what is going on, to review curriculum, to know what books are in libraries and things, not because we want to ban books, just that we want to make sure that things are appropriate for the educational purposes. The system is designed to fulfill.
Thank you. Emily.
Uh, yeah, so I, I think, I think again, this is something that has come from the last couple of years, this, this shift in like kind of an awakening for parents to really start to understand why it's important for them to be involved in their children's education. And there's, there's good and bad that comes with it, but you know, the, the bad is that it just, it can become too heavily monitored again, that you can't seem to go anywhere with it. The ideal though is that if it's led correctly and organized correctly, it can become a wonderful way in which parents can be involved. The greatest, the, the ideal for this is that parents are involved in their students' lives and that that partnership and that relationship is fortified and stabilized within the schooling system. So one, one thing that I'm, I'm very pleased about our district, we realized that we didn't necessarily have a curriculum adoption policy. So they worked very hard developing that within our school district. From that, now I feel like we have such a better direction that we can lead our district. And what makes us so powerful now is that parents are aware of why that's important. And so when you combine, you know, I would encourage every parent that has a student to get involved with their community councils that they get involved with curriculum committees, independent curriculum committees, that they can also take the time to help review that. By doing that, it, it gives us a positive way to interact, not only with the administration, with our teachers, but also with our students and helping them succeed in that setting.
Thank you. I want to just stop here and interject that the internet connection on my end seems to be a little bit jumpy and I don't know if it's the same for each of you or for our audience, but please let me know if you need me to repeat a question. And so, so we make sure everybody understands what's, what's being asked. Then this next question, I believe we begin with Emily first. Earlier this year, the state school board decided that after hours of discussion and development, it would not be providing local districts with guidance concerning gender identity questions regarding things such as restrooms, locker rooms, overnight trips, for example. Such policies instead would be left, left up to local school districts. Do you agree with this decision? Begin with Emily.
You know, I, I've had quite a bit of discussion around this. I think that it's important for the Utah State School Board itself to provide the ideal of where we want Utah as a state to be. But I think by allowing local school districts to develop that, what you do is you reach those communities directly. And I, in, in the concept of how our country was formed and founded, that's the ideal because you are reaching directly those people that are involved in that setting. And so I would, I would just encourage parents to be a part of that discussion and part of that development. And I do think it's important to have standards. I do think it's important to have guidance and I think the Utah State School Board has, has done that to a good extent. You know, and it's very complex, but I, I would also encourage local school districts to really understand how important it is that they understand those subjects and in a broader view, how that will directly impact you know, their students and the environments that they come to. And also again, is this going to be something that fortifies the relationships between parents and children? And it's through those direct conversations and interactions with the citizens and how they're involved with policies like that, that, that makes this the best outcome that if we get involved. And that's the key. We have to be involved with these discussions.
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah, absolutely. Parents need to be involved in this. This is, I agree with this state school board's decision. I was one of the many thousands of parents who replied when they were seeking output on this. They had such a response that they decided to back off and not issue the guidance. This is, this is not just an educational issue. It's a, it's a health issue and the, the health and safety and mental health of their children and they need to be involved. I think it's absolutely appropriate for the local school boards and the local, locally elected representatives make this decision based on what they want locally. Rural southern Utah is going to have a different idea of what they want their school board to do than downtown Salt Lake City. I think it's absolutely appropriate that each local board gets to set their own policy, hopefully with, within some guidelines mandated by the, you know, the state code and whatnot. But you know, as someone who firmly believes that a government gets its right from the consent of the governed, it's absolutely right that the, the more local organization be able, gets to be able to, to set this code. You know, we, we've had lots of discussion here in our county. I actually wrote a policy and presented it to, you know, the, the community. We had multiple weeks debate on, on the ins and outs on this and I thought it was healthy, the, both the people I agreed with and the people I disagreed with had a voice and what the, what a policy might eventually look like. Our board hasn't adopted one, but every voice in our community has had a chance to get heard because we're having it on a small scale, local people, neighbors with neighbors instead of on the, the whole state.
Thank you. The next question is kind of along the same lines. Recently, a Utah lawmaker sent a letter to principals around the state concerning the quote transgender phenomenon. Where an increasing number of children, this is the quote here, are seeking to be identified as something other than their biological sex. While the letter generated controversy and raised larger questions about inclusion in our public schools, as a state school board member, how would you work to make all students feel included and valued? Begin with Richard.
Yeah, well, absolutely. Every student is a human being who has value. No matter what their sexuality or gender identity, they have value. They're people with real feelings and they need to be treated as such. I, I have not read the letter. I'm actually unfamiliar with it. So I don't know what it says. I can't talk about those specifics. But you, you absolutely need to make sure everyone has a safe place where they feel like they can really leave themselves at school. That includes the people who might not be comfortable going to the traditional boy-girl bathrooms. But it also means the people who do use those need to have a safe place where they feel like the other gender is not intruding and, and making them uncomfortable. Everyone needs to have a safe place to do those things. And to be able to function in their life in such a way that they aren't harassed or bullied or demeaned for being a little different. All of us have quirks and little idiosyncrasies that make us different and unique and those are the things that make us special. And just because somebody's idiosyncrasies and differences are different than yours doesn't, doesn't make them less valuable. We all need to recognize that.
Thank you. Emily.
Um, yeah, so, so my, my thoughts on this is that the students that enter these schools are, are beautiful, wonderful people. And they have this untapped potential where they are going to go in their life. And so when we send these students to school, our goal then is, and I pose the question again, why is it that we're sending our children to school? So our ideals there is to create an environment that gives a setting that provides them with the skill sets, the opportunities and, and the growth tools that they can be functional contributing members of society. And that can be addressed through how we structure what the school setting is there for. So for me, it would be the continuation of, of building these capacities in children. Now, every student will have and make their own story. If we provide them with the tools that they will need to make that happen for themselves, we can put our time and energy into giving those and fortifying that vision was what we're doing. That means that we're creating students that have high literacy rates. We're giving students that have high math rates. We have the ability, because if you can read, if you can think, if you can articulate that, you can write that down, you can guide your future. And so I, I would say that that is part of this, this question. Because if we are there to accommodate all the differences and complexities with every single student enters, what is it that we're giving them that creates an avenue and a pathway forward to make the lives for themselves that they desire?
Thank you. The state school, the State Board of Education distributes billions with a B, billions of dollars annually to school districts and charter schools. Please explain to our viewers what qualifies you to manage such a budget? And I think we're beginning with Emily here.
You know, the, the first person that made me aware of that was my husband on the amount of that. And, and that's really quite the weight that he definitely put on my shoulders, but through, through the experiences that we've had with being an entrepreneur, business owner, every day is nothing but the, the understanding of how money comes in and money comes out and the power of where your dollar goes and how the dollar is spent or saved, invested or not. And so I think I bring a very unique view for that because I know what it, it feels like to lose money. I know what it feels like to make money and I understand the desire to do good with that. So I, I would say that I will view every, every involvement that the state school board has through federal funds, through state funds, through local funds, is that money being spent at its, in its optimal way? And, and I do, I, I am very interested in, in how that's done. And I think that it can be responsibly done. And I think that at the end of the day, if we are funding the correct programs and foundations, that it will be our teachers that are benefited. And a part of my campaign has, has been to fund teachers, not programs. And if we fund teachers and not programs that are swallowing up a teacher's autonomy to do what they've, you know, been trained to do, then that will directly affect the benefits and outcomes, comes of our children. They go hand in hand.
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah, your question was, you know, what makes me qualified to handle, you know, a budget with billions and quite frankly, that's a question for every elected official ever. The only thing that makes any individual qualified to handle those terms of money in elected position is having a is having a proper understanding of the proper role of government and your position to uh, your having moral chains on your own character so that you will not abuse the position, misuse the funds to carry out your own personal ends. Um, or to, you know, shape society according to your own personal goals instead of uh, the fulfilling the purpose uh, for your office. Um, I, I know I absolutely have that. In fact, I know Emily quite well. I know she has that. We're both absolutely qualified to be able to sit in that position and manage those funds appropriately.
Thank you. Well, we've now reached a little bit more than halfway through uh, this debate. Uh, and so far, what I can see is I only have one question from our viewing audience, and this will go to Richard first. Um, what do you see as the role of the state school board is in relationship to local, the local school boards? Richard?
Yeah, well, I mean, the way they're organized politically is the, they are subdivisions of the, well, technically mostly the county governments, but they're subdivisions of the state. And so uh, on paper and according to law, they they kind of answer to the state. On top of that, they also receive the bulk of their funding, uh, you know, as we talked about in the previous answer from the state. Um, I don't, in terms of what the relationship should actually be, I don't think the state, despite its legal ability, should not be imposing its will on all of the local school districts. Um, I think most of the decisions and most of the day in day happening should be happening locally uh, and under the control of not even necessarily the local boards, but the, the teachers in the classroom, the parents involved, the principals, as much as we can localize that control, the better things will be. Um, it, it has a role in making sure that all of those districts are following the standards and the state code of conduct. Um, you know, as it's established and written down in our constitution that the parents are the primary caregivers and in charge of their children's education, those types of things. So they need to be a watchdog, making sure none of the local districts overstep their bounds. But I hope they're not ever in a position where they're actually imposing their will uh, on, on an unwilling populace of the state.
Thank you. Emily.
Yeah, so, um, you know, I've, I've actually thought about this because that's, that's a lot of um, some of the conversations that have come up a lot lately is the uh, I guess the topic of control and how that affects. I do believe that being in the, the, the role of the Utah State School Board is to set the standard. And using the word standard as in they have clarified the vision and the benchmarks that they want to see their, their state thrive in. I, I know that um, as of late that um, we have failed our audit in those regards. I, I know that I have followed the rewrite of mission, of local mission statements. Um, when you see that those mission statements leave out the words academics, you are, you become aware that maybe we have gotten our priorities off track. So I think that again, it's back to that question. That's why do we send our children to school? And why are our children coming to these places to learn? And I think that it is crucial for the Utah State School Board to set those standards. And then with that, you know, with kind of maybe that vision of light, I think that again, coming back to getting every single parent involved with the answer to that question and what those ideals look like will create our schools that we will be proud of and will be involved with. We need to get out of their way, but we also need to to shed some light on that. We also have a responsibility to make sure that the federal government is kept at bay. Um, and we need to be aware of what control is coming in from people that are contributing money or controlling the money that funds what the state school board is uh, put in charge of.
Thank you. I want to once again ask our viewing audience to please send us questions. We know you're out there. We know you, there must be things that you're wondering about. Please uh, put that into the chat. Um, I want to ask a little bit about shortage of teachers nationwide. This has been a perpetual problem in Utah, and I think it's been exacerbated now by the general labor shortage in, in our society. Um, what should or could the state board do to increase the pool of competent qualified teachers from which districts and charter schools can fill this need? Are we inadvertently turning people away from the profession of teaching? Um, we'll begin with Emily on this one.
Yeah, so this is a really, this is a really great question. Um, and I think a lot of it can, well, I think there's many different ways that you could analyze what's going on. Um, it seems to me that as, as I have been connecting, you know, with people and asking questions and talking to teachers, again, this is another catapult into why I'm doing what I'm doing because my oldest is seventeen, so I've been involved for over, you know, twelve years watching the metamorphosis of the education system. We've had a lot of people um, that have exited and and part of that, and not all of it, but part of it is this um, frustration with, with some things as I kind of campaigned on our, our programs, capital P, that have suffocated their ability to teach the art and heart of teaching. And you know, and I know that this, you know, we're kind of entering controversial waters here, but I do think it's fair to say that we need to check ourselves in how the climate of a school is interacting with the external pressures that are being presented through programs and ideologies. That the teacher is not allowed to teach the passion of what they went to college for and that they're dying to teach their students because they are so overworked and overbooked by, you know, the recording and uh, of the things that are required for those, that's going to be frustrating. There's not a reason for them to stay. I think that also we can address, you know, the, the pay, understanding that pay, I think that's important. And that again, that's, it all ties together. You circle back to where all that money is going. If we have a bloated system that is suffocating teachers to do what they passionately want to do, we need to start there.
Thank you, Richard.
Well, how to, how to bring more teachers in? Obviously, I could go with increased pay. I mean, that's, that's obvious. If you pay people more, you'll have a greater pool of uh, qualified people. Um, you don't, some of that could be done by reducing administrative costs, costs uh, to each of your local districts. I don't think the state school board has uh, any reason to impose that on a local board, though. That's where teachers and parents or parents specifically need to be involved and take control of their local board, make sure more of those education dollars end up in the classroom and not in administration. Um, but I think part of the reason we're having the, the lack of teachers is just the general divide and divisiveness in the culture war. Um, teachers who don't want to be absolutely mandated, you have to use specific pronouns. They're saying, well, I don't want to be in that kind of environment. Um, uh, the teachers who feel like parents being involved are now questioning and looking over their shoulder and nitpicking every decision they make, don't want to be micromanaged like that. Because of the general cultural divide and the culture war taking place, it teaching has become a battleground when it shouldn't be. We should all be able to be unified that uh, we want our children well-educated by competent people who don't have to fight us uh, on, on, in, in the education sphere. Um, there are ways it could be addressed, whether or not they're all appropriate to be handled at the state school board level. I don't know, but as a state school board rep, I would, you know, absolutely spend my time trying to make sure the local boards know what they're supposed to do and can do on their own without our permission. And then I would try to get, make sure, convince my fellow members on the state school board to exercise that authority where appropriate to to try to fix that and keep the culture war out of our classrooms.
Thank you. Everything kind of froze up there for a minute for me, so I'm assuming you're done, Richard.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Jack.
Okay, great. Let's move on here. And again, if you have questions in our audience, please post them. We'd be happy to pose them to our, um, to our candidates here today. So this year, this last legislative session lawmakers defeated a hope scholarship bill. The critics said was the resurrection of the school vouchers plan that voters defeated fifteen years ago. This issue may come up again in the next session. What's your opinion on this program? And should Utah parents be given greater choice as to where their education tax money goes? Richard, let's start with you.
Yeah, I, I'm all in favor of any variety of ways to increase parental choice in education. Our state constitution uh, makes parents the uh, uh, primary person in charge of their children's education and the state education system is meant to enhance that and to uh, to help them, not to replace them. Um, I, I've homeschooled my children. I've had them in charter schools. I got seven of them in public schools right now. Um, we've been all over, um, and I've been involved in all those, and I think all of those options ought to be available and funded by the state. Um, I think the number right now is somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty thousand dollars a student. Um, uh, I, and I don't feel like that is currently, I don't think each student is receiving twenty thousand dollars worth of education. I wouldn't want to cripple the public education system by letting all of those funds suddenly flow into other sources, but parents need to have a choice. Um, the old saying was that, you know, if you uh, if you uh, judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree, then it will, you know, grow up thinking that it's a, you know, disabled handicap. I guess I butchered that saying anyway, but you get the point. If we, if we try to make every kid fit into the exact same educational system, a lot of them who are not designed to learn in those specific ways are going to grow up thinking that there's something wrong with them, and there is not. It's simply that educational system is not designed to fit their strengths. And so giving parents the choice to be able to use some of the money to fund their child's education because we believe that that is appropriate as a society, they, they need to have the choice to find the best approach for their children.
Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, so you know, I, I agree with um, school choice one hundred percent. Um, agreeing to that also requires that you understand what that will look like once money is, you know, earmarked for a specific use. And that's what the concerns that I have heard from people I know, you know, groups of from every single category, charter, private, homeschool, you know, public that went up to the state and voiced their um, concerns or they're in support or in not support of this approach. But so I think for us, there's for me at least, there's two parts. Number one is why has there been an uptick in people wanting to exit the public school um, scenario? And I think that, that's probably the, the bigger question for me, and I think that we need, need to take a good hard look at. And then if we're willing to look at it, are we willing to um, address the things that we hear from that? Are we willing to understand that maybe the ideal, like kids aren't getting the type of education parents thought that they were sending their kids to? If that's the truth, then we have two options. We either um, rise up to that, you know, passion or, you know, the, the academic rigor that parents are hoping for in that setting. Or, you know, we stay the same. And I think at this point, we might see, and you know, a continued exit is from that. But I think also what's going on is we have technology, we have all these different ways that education was brought, you know, to the forefront in the last couple of years. And so there are options. I know it, I think a lot of us are interested in how the state of Arizona will approach them passing this ability, but at the end of the day, um, I think parents know their children, and I think that there's a broad, broad avenues of how education can be delivered, and I think that's worth uh, continuing the conversation. And I would actually like to continue that conversation about how we fund our, how the funding works with how our students engage in the education process.
Thank you. Uh, the earlier question was about how the state board interacts with local boards. How about, how should the state board of education interact with the state legislature? Uh, both of you are independently elected uh, public servants, yet they hold the purse strings. And uh, how, how would you go about uh, developing a relationship and what is the proper relationship between uh, those two bodies? Emily, we'll begin with you.
Well, I think having communication between the both is, is absolutely key. I think that the laws that get passed at the state directly influence what is happening within the school systems. And I, I've seen, you know, those relationships happen. Um, I think that there needs to be collaboration. I think that all avenues of, of a bill that is sitting on the floor needs to be thought about and how that directly affects. You know, the way my brain works is if something is presented in front of you, then I get, okay, this is what we want. And then I, I begin to plan backwards until I'm at the present moment. So you can understand what that process looks, what the ideal looks like and what the process, policy, law, guidelines, training, all, you know, money that would be required to make that ideal happen. And I think by by stepping that, as far as it goes with how this would manifest, a law would manifest within the school system, we need to, we need to have those conversations. And so by bringing people in and having, you know, discussing all of the different ways that this would look and how that directly impacts, you know, the taxpayer, the parents, the child, the legal system. Um, and also the ideal of, of what we want to see happen in America on our state level and then on our local level, and then within the walls of our own home. It all goes together. So it's very important. Um, that relationship, like obviously each has its own proper roles, and I think that those roles need to be respected. There needs to be ethics. There needs to be accountability. And most important, it needs to be transparency.
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah, absolutely. Communication and uh, with, with the legislature is paramount. Um, ultimately, they get to set the rules for uh, what the state school board gets to do. They're a superior body. Um, hopefully, the people of the state will, are electing people to their legislature such that rather than simply come in and tell us these are the rules, follow them, that they will talk to the state school board as the experts. You know, as if I get elected to be a member of the state school board and I'm constantly talking to local school board members and teachers and principals and parents, hopefully the legislatures are going to come in and say, hey, you are the expert in this area of education for your area. What are the needs you have? What would help solve the problem? Uh, what, what, what needs do you see arising in the future? What can we do to prevent those? And so simply having an open line of communication and good relationships with all of the people up on the hill will help us give recommendations and help influence legislation that they pass. Um, and hopefully their legislation that they want to get passed, they come to us uh, for ideas and suggestions on, on what are you hearing from your principals and uh, you know, uh, school board members uh, locally. If, if, if people will talk and communicate, all of these problems can be solved. There's not any of these issues that we've talked about that can't simply be solved by communication. There, there's, there's not some, nature is not combined against us to make sure our kids don't learn. It's just people making choices. We need to just be able to communicate, talk about the problems like rational adults and fix the problems.
Thank you. I want to make one last plea to our viewing audience to please send us some questions if you have some. Uh, we're getting ready to wrap up here in a few minutes, and we'd love to hear what some of your concerns are. Um, so state lawmakers are talking about changing the way uh, schools are funded in Utah. There's been talk about a constitutional amendment to, to do away with the requirement that all income tax money goes toward uh, public and higher education to make education have to compete with every other state program for funding. Uh, I'm wondering, I'm wondering what your opinion is of that? If you think that's a good step for the state to make? Uh, and, and if so, why? And we begin with Richard on this.
Well, it would be a shame if one election cycle brought in a whole wave of people who didn't want education and they were able to simply defund it. Um, so that would not be ideal, of course. Um, generally, competition is a good thing. Uh, I, I think people paying taxes generally it's, it's easier to swallow when they know it's going for something universally recognized as a social good like educating children. Uh, they're infinitely less interested in doing so for lots of the other things tax money goes to, but it's palatable to uh, educate kids. Everyone kind of recognizes that children are infinitely valuable and worth spending money on. And I think if the state was to go ahead and make it possible that education could be underfunded or defunded, um, and it had to actually compete for the resources like other programs, I think it's possible they'd find a larger scale tax revolt would be possible. So that's just a simple, you know, approach to solving the problem. You know, it's a strategic thing that I think they might be silly to pass.
Thank you, Emily.
Well, I, I think that this is, I never thought that I, I guess I would hear, be at a point where I would hear that um, how school is funded would be something that people were willing to talk about, um, which I think highlights the maybe discontent that is surfacing around what is going on in the school system. And so that, I think, requires again us asking ourselves, being in these positions, are we actually delivering what people are expecting? And if these conversations keep manifesting and even down to defunding public conversation, I think that's a really big sign that maybe we're missing the mark. And so here we are having to now discuss, how do we keep funding our schools? Do we even want to keep funding our schools? And what now becomes, you know, what education, the delivery of, of a sound education? And what now becomes, you know, what education, the delivery of, of a sound education to our citizenry looks like? And, and so we're, I think, obviously, we're, we're going to start talking about that, that I think um, you, you also have the quality checks that are associated with, with, and we're coming back to standards as well, making sure that we understand what it is that we're looking for to have, you know, what capacities are we having be built in our children and how, how does financing those affect them? And if we're getting it wrong, I, we, we do have to talk about that. Um, the federal funds coming in, I know that that's been something that's been brought up um, to me about, you know, how federal funds are impacting what the Utah State School Board is doing as well, or the programs that exist in that area. And so it's very complex, but I think the root of this conversation is why are we failing and how could we genuinely correct it so we can maintain integrity and quality in expectation?
I, I, I must apologize for not keeping better track of how, how long the answers are because sometimes my, my connection here is blipping out and I'm not quite able to see.
No, you're fine. She gave a good answer. That the fact that uh, people are even having the question, do we want to continue to fund public education is absolutely a discussion worth having. Uh, so she, she gave a good answer on that. It's, it's absolutely the kind of answer I, I, you know, meant to give as well. Uh, it's the topic of conversation when it comes to funding. Is, is it worthwhile right now?
Thank you. Um, let's move, we have about time for one more question here before we go to closing statements. Uh, Utah allows students to opt out of state mandated assessment tests. And this gives parents greater control, but uh, for his accountability, making it harder to see how our schools are performing. Uh, how should the state board of education evaluate which schools are succeeding and which need to do better? And do you agree that parents should be allowed to opt out of these tests? And I believe we begin with Emily.
I do believe that parents should be able to opt out of the tests. Um, I also think that the hesitancy that we are seeing towards the assessments that are coming through the schools is also uh, manifesting our discontent with, and, and the breakdown of the, the trust and relationships between, you know, those, that, that partnership. And again, um, ties back to why. And so if, if we, and let's keep that conversation happening, and I would love to hear from constituents about why they are hesitant about the surveys that are coming through. I also feel that, you know, part of the sentiments that I have heard about this is that um, there's more, there's more time on these assessments um, in areas that they don't feel is appropriate for the school to be asking about. So I think that's also realigning the purpose of why we send our sk, our kids to school. And I would love to see um, surveys go out. Do you feel confident in writing an essay? Do you feel confident in your ability to enter um, certain job markets with a, a specific set of qualifications that they may or may not have learned within the school setting? If we could bring some of those surveys back around to academics, I think that that would be amazing to see what we could reach from there, from that. Again, it, it's fortifying the school walls back to why we thought we were sending our kids to school. And I feel that, that's where the disconnect is, is because you're seeing very, very private questions. We don't know what the data is, where the data is going. Um, generally speaking, if you're not really digging into it, we don't know whose hands that's getting in front of. We don't know what policies will be coming from it and the ethics around what policies would be. Um, and also the integrity of the questions that are being presented. And so this is, this is such a big thing. I know that data, I've said this data is the new goal. And with, you know, that approach, it requires being checks and balances. So if we can begin to answer those questions, continue transparency and, and letting parents know what it is, why they're being asked this, and also keep our bounds, you know, respectively towards that, then it will come out on the other side where we want to be, but we got to address the why first.
Thank you. You kind of froze up on me there, so but um, I appreciate the answer. Richard.
Oh, can you hear me?
I, I can hear you now, yes.
For a second, I couldn't. Um, yeah, parents, Emily's right. Parents absolutely should have the right to opt their kids out of this testing. Um, the state constitution makes then state educational code makes them the primary uh, person in charge of their uh, students' education. Um, there, there's absolutely no question that they should have that right. Um, she's right about the data as well and where that goes. I'm going to add a little bit. Um, tried to enhance what she said, as I absolutely feel that we absolutely over test kids. Uh, much like the old phrase, you know, don't pull up the, the plant, the flower to check the roots. We are constantly checking in and checking in and are they doing okay? And, and uh, I, we're using so much time doing that, we're losing instructional time when we could just be teaching them. And I think oh, the education system in general has lost sight of the fact that how they score on a test largely won't matter to their life. They get a C on a history final, they're still going to grow up and be a great person and have great potential and be able to be wonderful parents and have a good job and be a loving mother and father and any, anything else they want. Some, some of the greatest professionals we see in tech industries and things where high school and college dropouts, how they actually score on a test has very little effect on how their life is going to be and how happy they're going to be and how productive of a member of society they're going to be. I think we over test them too much. Uh, Dr. Glenn Domon, who started the Institutes for the Achievement of Human Potential, um, was adamantly against testing them when he developed his programs on how to teach infants to read and how to teach your baby math and how to teach multiple languages to all of your children. Um. He's absolutely brilliant and in his institutes, he's absolutely against constantly checking your children. Just teach them the information. They will learn what they're capable of learning. You will be able to understand where their weaknesses are. Uh, I absolutely understand parents' desire to say, I don't want you testing my kid nonstop on what are you doing with the data and what are you exposing them to in these tests? They absolutely have that right and that needs to be protected.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you for that.
Um, quickly, yes, because we're running, we're about toward the end, yes.
Yes, one thing that I could just wanted to add to that, and I have been researching this so I can understand it more. Um, again, because you're asking it because it is a big topic right now. And so what I found in Utah Code is, and parents, you know, you can look at this, it's fifty-three E dash nine dash two oh three. And it talks about um, the prohibitions on the administration to a student of any psychological or psychiatric examination, test or treatment, so forth, so on, through survey analysis. And from that, it has, you know, A through F on the things that may not be, information that may not be acquired through surveys. So uh, what we are seeing is that there are examples where that is breached. Again, it just highlights this um, base that we're in. We want to rebuild trust. And so I think it's just asking ourselves, why is it that we send our kids to school and make sure that the ethics are there? Make sure that we are acquiring the information that we need, but doing it in a way that's responsible and transparent and responsible. We have Utah Code that already exists that addresses those issues. And so I think bringing those laws to the forefront, aligning our approaches within our school systems to that is, is the best place that we can start.
Thank you. We're now uh, to the point where we are going to have closing, uh, closing statements. And uh, because we're kind of running out of time, I'm going to limit these to sixty seconds instead of ninety. And we began this with Richard. Let's begin this with, uh, closing with Emily.
Okay. Well, first of all, um, I would like to say thank you for everybody behind the scenes that, that made this moment possible. We do appreciate being able to have this opportunity and be able to reach people throughout the state of Utah. So thank you very much for having us today. And I just want to say that um, I keep being asked, why, why did you do this? And for me, it's that I'm, I have always been passionate about the power of education. And I, I truly believe that every student has something inside them that desires the best educational opportunities that they can be given. I also believe and personally experienced and witnessed both in my own life and people around me when they are given skills to apply to their lives, that they take their lives to places that they dream about. And that is our responsibility. I want to make sure that, that the integrity, the academic rigor, the academic disciplines are at the forefront of these institutions that do what, that we don't get off in the weeds for things that could automatically be directed by educating the minds of our students. And so it's that, that passion, that dedication that I will apply every day in this position. Um, again, if you'd like to know more about me, go to voteemilygreen.com. I have a video there, my tenants, my history and an email and phone number, and please call with questions concerned and we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard.
Yes, um, I'm going to do something maybe you're not used to in uh, these types of debates, Jay, and anyone who's watching. While I know I am absolutely qualified and capable of holding this position, uh, I want to let everyone know that they, I am not so foolish as to think that as a libertarian in rural Utah that I'm going to beat my Republican opponent. Um, I want everyone who might possibly be watching or reading the transcript to know that they are in absolutely good hands with Emily Green. Uh, she is moral and principled and absolutely just as capable as I am to hold this position. Um, I ran to make sure that there was at least one good option on the ballot. And I am happy to say that there are two. Anyone voting can vote for either of us and be confident that a good job will be done on your behalf.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. And thank you to both of our candidates, Richard Jensen and Emily. And thank you to all who are watching. We hope that we have uh, educated you and, and helps you to make a more informed decision on election day. Thank you both very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, Jake.